Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. It is 1:01 PM on January 11th, and this is a special meeting of the Lake County Board of County Commissioners for the purpose of approving our minutes for the end of 2020. We also have a couple of other things on the agenda for today. So we will start with approving our minutes and then have an update on water information from Commissioner Mudge, and then we will just have a quick debrief about national activities that have transpired over the past week. So with that, we'll go ahead and get started. Commissioner Mudge was kind enough to review our minutes and send those edits out to us this morning. So Commissioner Mudge, if you would like to show your screen and walk us through those, I think that'd be great. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, okay. So this is the first set. We got four documents from the clerk. A few, well, all of which, including multiple, multiple meeting minutes. So this is the first set and the earliest set, starting on May 28th. My notes simply have these motions reversed as to whether or not Commissioner Marcela or I made the motion or seconded. Commissioner Marcela, I'm not sure if yours reflect that, but those were the only changes I have for this set on May 28th.
Same.
If you have notes, okay. All right, so Patty, if we could make those changes on who made the motion and seconded. That's all for May 28th. Next is June 1st, and I had, I wondered, the only thing in these minutes, I entered the agenda that was posted for that meeting because as far as I can tell, the only thing recorded in the minutes was item one regarding their repository request for the school district. And I'm wondering if we need to include the other seven items. Discussion or formal action taken on the other seven items.
Yeah, can you scroll back up to the top of this real quick?
Yeah.
Sorry.
No problem.
For June 1st, okay. Okay, and then scroll down, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Don't apologize. Is that far enough, or?
Yeah. Yeah, we do need to have those, those items reflected on there, those action items.
Okay, all right, then I guess I'd ask that Patty go back to the recording and of the June 1st meeting so that she's sure to include all eight agenda items.
Okay.
Let me see, I'm sorry, I'm gonna go back up and just make a list here, 28th. Okay, June 1, include all eight agenda items. Okay, and moving on. So here is one from June 1st, also at 3:30 PM. This was a meeting, a special meeting where the person was going into executive session. I didn't have any changes or comments for this meeting.
I don't either. I will just get a certification from Katie Walter on that.
Okay, June 1. Yes, certification, okay. The next one is a June 15th meeting, and I don't think I had, I didn't have any, I was absent on that meeting, so I don't have any comments there.
No, I didn't have any changes to this either.
Okay. And let's see. Next is June 25th. And this was a special meeting to go into executive session. I didn't have any comments there.
Same.
Okay. June 29th. Go ahead.
No, I just wanted some clarification from legal potentially on this. Since it's a Board of Health meeting and the Board of County Commissioners does not convene as the Board of Health because it's separate, Chris, would these need to be approved by the Board of Health and not the Board of County Commissioners?
I believe that would be true if the the BOCC wasn't sitting as the Board of Health at that time.
No, we, and we have not necessarily, we have not been sitting as the Board of Health because they had, we've read, we had redone the structure in 2019.
Right, okay, then in that case, yes, then I believe that any decisions or whatever reflected in the minutes need to be approved by the Board of Health.
Okay, so Sarah, let's, anything that we come across that says Board of Health, we'll pull out because Patty still does take our minutes for the Board of Health. And then her and I will send those to the Board of Health for approval at their next quarterly meeting.
Okay. So yeah, just have to change that header and then note all seven Board of Health members, I would say, who were present or absent. And then just noting all seven down here, too. Yes, okay. July 1st, meeting minutes. I just corrected, there was a discussion with the blood lead group on the fee and the disposition of the XRF gun, the lead level indicator equipment. I don't, it's not SRX.
Okay.
And if I have XRF wrong, it's, it's later in some minutes, so that needs to be just clarified there. That's the only comment I have on this set for July 1st with the LCCHP. And then July 6. Okay, sorry, July 6th was a regular meeting. And then I just inserted here the Crossroads Trail, the Crossroads name for that, the CDOT. The project that Mike Conlin, we agreed on, Mike Conlin, moving forward with to do the CDOT permitting. The name is the Crossroads Trail and it's located at Hayden Pond. So I have a comment there to include the Crossroads Trail name. And I added this language on the next motion on the, it says, "Motion was made by Commissioner Marcela and seconded by Commissioner Glenn to approve the United States Forest Service permit for the Dairy 3," and I added "water right diversion site." And then it goes on with the language given to us to work in collaboration with the Forest Service to maintain. And I added "Lake Counties," and it goes on with the original language, "water right. All commissioners voted in favor." So I just wanted to make sure that we knew we're talking about our water right. And I think that is, those are the two additions I have there. Any comments or other changes?
No.
Okay. Sorry, just making a shorter list to consolidate. All right, and then I have, or I think we are missing a special meeting with the intention of going into executive session for July 6th. And I copied and pasted the planner language here. So I think we'll need to request a set of minutes for the opening and closing of that special meeting, as well as the certification.
Okay.
Okay. Let's see, July 9th, I had no no comments on this. Oh, actually, I did. Okay, I just had a small change and it appears just a few places in the minutes as a typo where I believe Patty is intending to write CDOT for Department of Transportation and she's written COOT. So this is the first spot, and there's a couple others to correct.
The only other thing, too, that I see there, Sarah, is Tamra Pogue from Summit County, her name should be P-O-G-U-E instead of P-O-K-E.
Okay. P-O-G-U-E, okay. And CDOT correction. Okay. On the July 20th meeting, I think I was going to ask Patty to review the meeting to see if Kayla and I, in fact, repeated our comments, which is very, which is completely likely, or if these two accounts were left over from the July 6th meeting because they read the same. And then when we get down to the Hayden Pond contract, Hayden Pond contract for the bathymetric survey, I corrected that language. It's also known as an ASBILT survey to measure the volume capacity. So I just added that for clarification or included it as was likely mentioned in the meeting. Let's see, and then I just had, I did not go back and listen to the meeting, but I wondered if this part truly a motion or if we had this discussion because we then tabled the resolution. Well, I don't know. Was it discussion or was there formal action? That was maybe a confusing account and possibly a confusing conversation, but Commissioner Marcela, do you have any better recollection of that?
No, I don't. I think I'll have to go back to the recording and listen to that.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I think we, I think we just discussed the mapping department and some of those changes to make to the resolution. And then and then as it says down here, "Motion was made to approve the resolution, but then we amended that to table it until the 27th so that all of the changes and appointments could be included." So maybe just clarity on that. Okay, sorry, anything else on the, on this?
No.
Okay. In the July 27th meeting, I added the file name for the Leadville Townhomes PUD. Going back in my records, I think the actual number was 30, and I don't think the title includes the, the number of units anyway. So I just wanted to include the formal file number. On the follow-up. Okay, on the following paragraph, I corrected the bathymetric survey and corrected the spelling and the the capitalization of the Hydro Geo Designs vendor. And I, I added the, I just added "and" to make the sentence read more clearly, I thought. In the following paragraph, and then a couple more paragraphs down. "Motion was made by Commissioner Mudge to include the position of Roden Bridge Supervisor pursuant to 43-2-111 CRS into Resolution 2012." Because it says to include it, and it doesn't really say where. But I believe our, we were, we wanted to include that because we have to do that appointment every year. And it's not currently included in our typical beginning of the year resolution. Does that make sense?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, great. I don't have any other comments on that set. Do you?
No, I don't.
Okay. All right, and July 30th. All I have here was to include the full name of HCM as the bid and maybe these guys, too. Just so it's perfectly clear, and if anybody, and especially they were searching and indexing for when their proposals were reviewed, and they searched for their name, they would be able to find that. Okay.
I will send the, the full names of, of those contractors to Patty to answer in there.
Great, thank you. I think that was it for me on those, that set of minutes. Just spell out the acronyms.
Yeah, looks good.
Thanks, and, okay, that's the first set, so on to the next set. Let's see if this. Does that switch? Are you still seeing my word being shared with the August 3rd, or is it?
No, it's still May 20th to July 30th.
Okay, I'm gonna just stop and share again. All right, can you see it now?
Yes.
All right, great. So on to the next set, starting August 3rd, 2020. I, and I noted here, too, I just, with all of the contracting for the architecture and the engineer and then the construction, I thought that it was worthwhile adding the clarification that LM Kersting was the construction contractor with all the activity that is going on at the fire station.
Okay.
I don't know what your thoughts are on that.
I think that would be appropriate.
Okay. So I'll just erase that part, that's just my note. Okay. And that's all I had for those August 3rd minutes.
Okay.
Is that good? Did you have anything else?
No.
Okay, all right. Let's see, on the August 14th minutes for the special meeting with the conversation around some of the LCCHP group activity, I just, I, I redacted the, a couple sentences that were not that were part of the discussion, but were not stated as truth because it was, the whole point of the discussion was whether or not we were getting, we were able to determine cause, and moisture was not determined as cause of the bubbling paint. And Fithales Environmental has worked with CDPHG, but CDPHG doesn't have a consultant that does work for them specifically. And so that, I don't think that's a accurate statement to include either.
Okay.
Okay, that's all I have there. Let's see, here's another Board of Health meeting. I don't think I was present. I am not currently on the Board of Health.
No, I think you can take that, take those out of there for us to pass on to the Board of Health.
Okay. Okay, so that's the August 14th meeting. And moving on to August 20th. I just added what item number five was, the final contract approval with LM Kersting.
Okay.
And I sorry, there is just comments on the, this is when the fires on 70 were, were, and people were being redirected to go other alternative routes over Hagerman, and we were having like such an issue with that. So just clarifying some of those, and then the comments made on the UP site and that an agreement had been made, not having to go through eminent domain for the right of entry. I think that is important since there was such misunderstanding of what our actions were as the board and with the specific language of eminent domain. And we needed to make sure that we were communicating properly, that this was not to acquire the property, but just for the right of entry. Okay, that is all I have for that set.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Okay. And then I believe that we are missing September 3rd special meeting minutes with the intent to go into executive session, and I've copied and pasted the planner posting here.
Okay, I will, can you, let me just see that here real quick. Okay, let me connect with Katie on that on September 3rd.
Yes.
Okay.
And that was, well, you can read it, sorry.
Nope.
Okay, all right. All right, and then on September 9th, there's a set of minutes and all the additions I have were adding the Crossroads Trail name. Again, when we were talking about the, the work being done and correcting CDOT acronym there. So I think that's it. That's all I have for that.
Okay, I don't have anything on that one either.
Okay. So then September 14th, I specified, I added the specification of the letter to Mountain View Village because that, that's the only mobile home park that we sent a letter to at that time. Instead of all the mobile home park communities. And that's all I have for the September 14th.
Yep.
Okay. September 20th, I don't have any changes or comments.
Do you want me to add in HCM's full name there as well? For Fire Station 2?
Here on the last?
If you scroll to the, scroll down where it talks about a motion was made to accept the contract with HCM. Do you want me to add HCM, add HCM's whole, whole name in there?
Sure, yeah, that'd be good.
And then I think it might be good to add for where we talk about SIMS mapping, what the SIMS stands for, the SIMS acronym.
Very good. What is that again? Give me, Chris?
Chris, what does SIMS mapping stand for?
Sorry, it helps if you unmute yourself when you're talking. So it's, was it strategic intercept mapping, I believe?
Strategic Intercept Mapping. Sequence?
Yeah, hold on, let's get this right.
Thank you, all right.
Yeah, because I've used that acronym so many times now that I'm not 100%.
Yeah, it's the full thing. Not been impressed in my brain.
So yeah, it's not, it's sequential intercept model mapping. So SIM stands for sequential intercept model. And then mapping.
Intercept.
Model.
Intercept Model. Mapping. So it's two Ms.
Well, the mapping part isn't a formal part of it. It's the, the SIM just stands for the process. So they just talk about the mapping as how you're going to apply the process.
Okay. All right. Okay, very good, thank you. So just spelling out those two were the only, those two acronyms were the only comments I had on the September 20th. Okay. Again, this September 24th is a Board of Health meeting.
We can pull those out and send those to the Board of Health.
Thank you.
Yep.
And September 28th. Let's see, special meeting to open the RFP proposals received for the SIMS mapping.
Okay. Sequential Intercept Model Mapping.
Okay. All right, just spelling that out is all I have then on that. The following one is September 30th. I have no comments there. Maybe spelling out that acronym, okay. I presume you didn't have anything else there either, Commissioner Marcela?
No.
Okay, all right, so that's, that's it for the end of that set. And the next set, let me stop sharing and share again so you can see it. Okay, the next set starts October 1. A special meeting, I have, this is the Board of Health. So again, punt that to Board of Health approval.
Yes.
Okay. And October 5th. I believe that this was the boiler repair in the courthouse, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I just wanted to spell that out because we have quite a few boiler issues with different facilities. So add courthouse to be clear on that approval of repair or the addition to the agenda. And then, again, I just made a specific note on that Mountain View Village reported that we were waiting, and I believe it was till February for their space rent increases. Moving on, I just clarified that the custodians maintenance, sorry, when we're talking about the paragraph and a motion to be made to purchase the disinfectant backpacks and handhelds, I added for the two visitor center. for the two visitor centers to utilize those as well. That was part of our discussion. Okay, and then I added in the next paragraph on the wheelers, conversation about new easement. Um, the cloud, I added the Cloud City Wheelers and Trail Development.
Okay.
And, okay. Language, that, that, the easement is, uh, was proposed with the intent to be similar to the Timberline Trails and CMC and Mineral Belt. And that's all I have for those October 5th meetings, minutes.
Looks good.
Okay. And the October 7th. Um. This, sorry, I didn't, I didn't realize Lichtenegger's name is not spelled right, but I'm not sure I have his correct name. Chris, would you maybe do a quick search on that for us, please, if you're paying attention to this riveting conversation? Okay, thank you. It's at least missing a T somewhere. Thank you. Um, other than that, I don't have any comments on this LCCHP work group meeting.
I don't either.
Okay, Mr. Lichtenegger's name, last name is spelled L.I.C.H.T.E.N.E.G.G.E.R.
Okay, so we're just missing a T.
Okay.
And moving on to October 15 minutes, I corrected Crystal Hewlett's spelling of her name and her title. That's, that's all I have.
Okay, same.
Uh, moving on to October 19th. Um. Uh, this again is the courthouse repair, just having, adding specific specificity there. Um, and then correcting the Upper Arkansas River Restoration Project. Correct is, is the name of the, the group. Um, correcting CDOT and clarifying that CDOT's plan referred to in the southern part of the county, it was for resurfacing in 2021. I think that's important to clarify because we want to give people the heads up as, as much as we can.
Yes.
Um, yeah, and I don't think I have any other comments on that set.
I don't, I didn't.
Okay. Um, moving on to October 22nd, I do not have any comments.
Me either.
Okay. Um. I, I think this is a leftover on the amendment to the agenda from that October 19th meeting. Just asking Patty for, and then I think, and then this also, I think, is a leftover, so I would probably suggest we redact those two. Just do not. Um, and then I just clarified here with the village generation reimbursement um, for their early allocation of their funds to the Unmet Needs Committee. To the approval of that amount of reimbursement.
Say that one more time, Sarah.
I just added, so.
Oh, okay, okay.
For the approval, I just, I added the, for the amount of reimbursement.
Okay.
Because it just says approve the funding for their commitment.
That's fine.
Okay. And then I do not have anything else for that set.
No, I don't either.
Okay. Moving on to November 16th. Um. Adding some clarifying statements in here for the Ski Cooper presentation by the Forest Service. Um, and instead of just removing the assets, specifically it was the Nordic Center assets um, from the Ski Cooper or the Lake County. I guess it is the Lake County Ski Cooper permit. And, and including a new permit for the Nordic Center. Well, now that I read that, I'm not sure I like that language, because it's not, the Forest Services is a I don't want to include a permit under our permit because that's not accurate. But the Forest Service will be issuing a separate permit for the Nordic Center. How about that?
Okay.
Okay. Um. Amendment permit also incorporates more of the Forest Service Management Area for Ski Cooper. Um, which is the, the, that was the intent of the proposal, not just to remove the Nordic Center from Lake County's permit. Um, but the request from the Forest Service was to expand the operational boundary to include the Forest Services Management Area or to match the Forest Services Management Area. Um, so I was trying to clarify that in that sentence or the paragraph with the with the language that I have highlighted there. Okay.
And up on the top. Um. Could you just remove the sentence, email the liens to me under public comments? Or change that to, um, Angelina was, was going to email the liens to B O C C and Clerk.
Mail the liens to. Yes.
Thank you.
Great. Okay, um, and then I, in the CPW letter of intent on the easements, the conservation easements of Lake County parcels, or I should say, I guess we should say parcels in Lake County, um, because they will be uh, once finalized, it will be acquired by the Central Colorado Conservancy, parcels in Lake County. Um, being acquired by the central. Sorry, my dog is really having FOMO. I don't know if you can hear her whining. Alright. Um. Okay, um, and then other comments on the next paragraph on the Dairy Through Diversion Site Order for Radar and Telemetry Equipment. Um, all the other diversion pieces are up and running. This telemetry equipment will send data to the Division of Water Resources, DWR, and the division will read and monitor that information for the county. Um, I then put in the CW, specifying the CWCB grant that we currently hold. Um. Uh, and then clarifying the comment about the Dairy Through Water only being used, only being able to be used for irrigation until we have a place to store that water that is credited, credited from that diversion site. Does that language make sense to Commissioner Marcel?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then I added Colorado Mountain College in the next paragraph. Um. When we had a discussion and made a decision on amending the deed um, for the site um, that the National Guard and Colorado Mountain College are in negotiations on for potential development.
Okay. Good.
Okay. That's it for that set. So November 30th, special meeting. Um, and I didn't, I wasn't sure. I, I, I guess I got the impression that actually listing those liens and making them a part of the record was the request from the Sanitation Department. Um.
I don't think that we've ever individually listed them out before.
Okay.
But Patty records those all together, um, in the Clerk's office. So they're all recorded with a letter from sanitation.
Okay. Okay, if that, that is, uh, seems to suffice, then that answers my question, great. Okay, and, um. And then the following one was the decision on the amended permitting boundary for the county and Ski Cooper. Um. Do, 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 do. I, I corrected the US Forest Service acronym there. Um. And clarified the review of the other leases that are in place with the operations. To be sure that we are reflecting changes made in the last couple of years. Okay. Um, that's the last set, or the end of that set. Okay, sorry, I'm looking for. Here we go. Okay. Okay, and then the December set of minutes. Um. Okay, starts with December 7th. Um. I added some clarifying language. Um, instead of the funeral office, the funeral home business is separate from Corner, Capitalized Corner, and those responsibilities. This business is in the process of being sold. Um. Yeah, any comments on, on those changes?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Then the following one, I just wanted to specify the county courthouse enclosed, continuing to be closed while we are in the orange
Yeah.
dial. Um, rather than perhaps giving someone the impression that we are not doing business at all to the public or closed, maybe I should put it there, closed to the public.
Yeah.
Okay, well, and the orange dial. Okay. Um. I included in the letter read into the record by Commissioner Marcel for the annual update on Continental Divide Cabin's LLC conditional use permit.
Okay. I don't think I have any, any other questions or anything on this right now.
Okay. And then I just added, um, the language amended contract to the next paragraph regarding the Platte River Networks. Um. Amended decision made on the amended contract. And I do not have anything else for that set.
No.
And I think that we are missing a special meeting that we had on December 8th. Um, and it may not have been at 5:30.
Um, it was at 3.
Okay.
3 PM. I'm not 100% certain if we took any formal action at that meeting or not, but I can listen to the tape.
Okay. Well, Patty should listen to the tape, probably. But, okay, so special, we're meeting, missing minutes on the special meeting for December 8th. Um, and then moving into the minutes received, the draft minutes received for December 10th, I have no comments on these.
I don't have anything there either.
Okay. But maybe just a space between there. Anyway. Um, and then after I believe we are missing minutes for the special meeting to go into executive session regarding Justice Center presentations for the evening of December 10th. Uh, I've copied and pasted the planner posting, and then also, um. Our meeting held on December 11th, where we formally allocated our CARES funding. Most of our CARES funding. And I and I have, let me know if you want me to stop.
No, that's good.
Okay, and I believe that we may be missing special meeting minutes for December 14th, and I copied and pasted
Yes.
Those, that, that planner, um, posting. Um, we then have drafted minutes for December 15th. And I don't have any comments there.
Um, I don't either.
Okay. And Amit has posted the link for readings that can be found on the website in the chat. Thank you, Amit. Uh, so moving on to December 21st, drafted minutes, I don't have any comments here.
I don't either.
Okay. And then December 22nd, special meeting. I have no comments to approve, and when, that was a meeting approving the Millavy Resolution.
No, I don't have anything either.
We did make changes. We had a small correction on, I think, URA allocation, but, um. We discussed those and then approved with those corrections in the meeting, so I so I think we're covered as far as having, having those pieces corrected, okay. And on December 30th, I don't have any comments on this meeting either.
Um, I don't either.
With the supplemental, but.
Yep, same.
Alright, great, so that is all.
Okay, I have written down on my list to connect, um, for certifications for executive sessions for July 6th, September 3rd, December 10th. Um, get the full name of the contractors for HCM and RPG maybe for the fire station. And then review December 8th, 11th, and 14th for special meeting agendas. Yeah. Okay. I think, um.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I'm, I think that's correct. I, I stopped also writing down my list, so. It's in the, it's in the documents, I share.
While you were going through. So I will.
Alright, thank you.
Yep, I will make a motion that we approve all of the minutes with the exception of July 6th executive session, September 3rd executive session, December 10th executive session. Um. And with the edits that had been presented by Commissioner Mudge.
Or do you second?
Okay, further discussion?
Um, I, I don't think we have to address approving the minutes. not omitted, you know, that, that we didn't get. But I suspect we'll, we'll fill in those gaps at our next meeting and review some of those minutes that we didn't get.
Yeah.
On, on the.
Go ahead.
I was gonna say on the meetings that were just omitted.
Okay. Yeah, let's aim to have those ready for January 18th. And I know that we'll have a new board at that point in time, but you and I can both take action on those with, without Jeff voting on those. So, um, any further discussion on that?
No, thank you.
Yep. Patty, we, I will move to get you some changes, the full names of those contractors and those edits from Commissioner Mudge, if you didn't receive those. All right, so seeing no other discussion, all those in favor? I?
I.
All right, thank you very much. Thanks for taking the time to go through those with us. I appreciate that and appreciate you going through those too, Sarah. Okay, so now if you would like to give us an update today on Lake County's water rights, we'll move into that next.
Great, so I wanted to be sure to at least make a community kind of update and comment, which doesn't necessarily stem from dealing with Lake County's water rights, but I was contacted by the gentleman who used to be the water commissioner for our district in the division, who has moved on to another position, but without the, they haven't filled his vacancy in his prior role, so he's still working in that role to some capacity. But that, and that is Brian Sutton, and he reached out to let me know that the division plans to send out notifications January 14th to those identified ponds by the Division of Water Resources. Sorry. To landowners who have been identified by the Division of Water Resources to have illegal ponds, meaning that their ponds are not adequately augmented, permitted, monitored, measured. And so I wanted to be sure, and I'll, I'll do my best to include this in a list of regular community updates moving forward in the coming meetings through this year. Because it's, it's gonna be, I've already gotten an email from an attorney representing a client questioning the availability of the county's augmentation plan to address and resolve the issue for their client. And so I think we all might anticipate getting some of that, those correspondence. Brian Sutton told me that they will be starting, they're sending out letters to all, but they will be starting enforcement lower in the basin. And Lake County would be the last place that they plan to kind of get through their list. This could take anywhere from a couple of years to 10 years. We don't really know. I, the plan is not to have the county's augmentation plan, or the plan is to have the county's augmentation plan up and operational by this year at some point. And to that point, I'm still in communications with the Upper Arkansas Water Conservancy District to work through a service agreement proposal for Lake County with them. And just a summary of that, I suppose. They do this for other entities outside their current service boundary. Pagosa Springs is one of them. And so this is not an inclusion of Lake County in the Upper Arkansas Water Conservancy District boundary. I know there's, there's been contention and some concern over the, these similar conversations over, you know, last decade plus. But this would strictly be a service agreement for the administration of our augmentation plan. Are there any questions?
Do you have a timer? Sorry, do you have an estimated timeline on the service agreement with Upper Ark?
I don't. I have not gotten a response on an outline and timeline. I think last time I brought this up to the board, we still needed to hear that from them, and so it was just next to impossible to, to get in touch with them through the end of last year. But Terri Skanga and I need to reconnect, and I will make those requests more formally to hopefully get swifter response, perhaps. I also have not been able to, to join their district meetings to request and push the point. So I'm hoping that, you know, in the, in the coming months, I will have the ability to do that.
Cool. I don't think I have any further questions. Paul, I know that you joined today because that was of particular interest to you, and so I was wondering, or making sure that you don't have any questions.
Thank you, Kayla. No, I don't have any questions.
Okay. Cool.
I, I will say, I responded, perhaps Paul and Michael Irwin have some thought or can think on this and send me any thoughts that might come to them. Brian Sutton from the division was asking me what contact information to include in their letters for folks, for, for the recipients of this letter. And I had directed them to, I, I put just the website and then my email. No phone numbers in fear of being inundated, but definitely they can find phone numbers and whatnot on, on the website. And I do hope to get something organized for Amit to help post on the website that kind of is just kind of an informational banner item to, to acknowledge that folks might be hearing from the Division of Water Resources.
Cool. I don't have any additional questions at this point. Michael, do you have any questions?
No, I don't at this time either.
Okay. Well, thank you for that update, Commissioner Mudge. I guess I just am curious if, how does the Division of Water Resources find a pond or storage on someone's property that's illegal?
So they've, they've known that that, this kind of activity has been happening for many, many years. And, you know, from, we have a local water commissioner, Gary Hanks is Lake County's water commissioner, and so he's the local, they have a local person like Gary on the ground dealing with, you know, open gates and making sure people are running water, and, and they kind of monitor and deal with water rate holders every year, every summer. And so in that kind of activity and folks who might reach out to the division to inquire about any development, they have compiled this information in a list.
Okay. Awesome. I was just curious about how you'd find if somebody had a pond, but that makes sense.
Yeah, people are on the ground.
I guess you'd have to be, really. Jeff, Patty, Chris, do, do any of you have any questions for Sarah on any of that information?
Not for me. Thank you.
Yep.
No, I'm good.
All right. All right, so moving on, I think we just want to have a quick debrief about the actions that we've seen taking place on a national stage. And just talk through that a little bit. So Sarah, if you'd like to, to start, because I know that you wanted to chat about this, I'll let you go ahead and start.
Yeah, I just, I, again, just wanted to maybe have a minute to acknowledge the events of last week at the nation's capital. And also, you know, make a statement that I, I think on a national level and a local level, the incivility that we have experienced is really uncalled for, and I'm frankly just tired of it. And so I don't think it's anything that we should condone or reward, and we should certainly acknowledge in an appropriate way. We heard from our community through the Black Lives Matter movement to hold our elected officials more accountable. And I certainly plan to work to support our community in that way through, through this next term.
Thanks. Yeah, I think it's just, uh, it's just a little heart-wrenching to watch things of that nature happen on a national level, especially in a place that's so sacred where the theory of democracy is put into practice. And it's definitely very heart-wrenching to see. I think it's important to continue to promote the message of, you know, now's the time to love your neighbor and love your family and your friends, and you don't always have to disagree or agree with everything that everyone thinks or says. But there's definitely a right and a wrong way to approach things. And violence and insurrection is definitely not an appropriate way to disagree. And I can't imagine the fear that those public officials had while that was happening. They're elected to do a job and to serve their communities and their districts, and I can't imagine the amount of fear that they had sitting there. And it's, like you said, Sarah, it's true on a local level. We see it on a local level. And at some point, it just has to end because it's not cool to be bullied as an adult. You talk to your kids about not bullying other kids and how to deal with bullies, and then you get into the real world and you have to deal with them, and it's not appropriate. Paul, I see you have your hand up.
I just wanted to say thank you, Commissioners Mudge and Marcela, for for bringing that up as a topic of conversation. It does have local impacts, and thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Paul.
Yeah, and to the part of your point, Kayla, about the service to the community, while in our nation, but speaking more locally. You know, there, there's, there's no good that, that throwing red herrings and, and creating or continuing any internal incivility does for our community. We, we have to get past it. And, you know, I know we have taken measures over the years to do that in a productive way. And hopefully, some of, you know, all of our fellow elected leaders will recognize and perhaps take the same stand and take a reflection to participate in the improvement of that here locally.
Yeah, definitely. It's definitely a time of reflection. You know, it's, I had, through reading a lot of the newspaper articles and hearing about people speaking, you know, it's a, there's a lot of of metaphorical aspects out there about the dawn and how the dawn brings new light and new life. And so this is just a time of reflection and a, a time of us really looking at ourselves and how we're doing our jobs and how everyone fits into the bigger picture, but you know, it's a time for us to think about kindness and how far just small, simple acts of kindness go, so. Keep spreading kindness and positive vibes. Cool, so I think with that, we're pretty much ready to wrap up. Commissioner Mudge, do you have anything else that you'd like to chat about?
No, thanks for taking the time on that, on all, on everything today.
Yeah, definitely. I don't have anything else that I think I'd like to chat about at this point. We're getting ready to close a chapter in our community with our old Board of County Commissioners, and so Commissioner Glenn is not present today, but thank him for his service if you see him out and about. And tomorrow, we will welcome our new Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Mudge was re-elected, and Commissioner Fiedler will join us tomorrow morning. I connected with Patty this morning. It sounds like the swearing-in ceremony will be pretty low-key for those getting sworn in and their immediate family members. So our IT department will livestream that ceremony for the rest of us to support our new elected officials and wish them luck on their new terms. So with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn today at 2:08 PM, and we will see you all tomorrow morning at 8:00 AM sharp.
All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.